Okay, your Latin Rosa.
Good morning to everybody. Today's Thursday, the 13th of May. It is our 10:30 regular Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we'd like to get started. And the invocation will be given by Bob Harrison, and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Hinkleman.
Please join with me. We gather together today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. Please allow us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. Please remember those of us who have passed from COVID and also please give us the patience to listen to others. Amen.
Would you please recite the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. One knee, one knee, one knee. For God.
And justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the invocation and the pledge. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President, via Zoom, from the city of St. Joseph.
Curran.
President, via Zoom, Niles Township.
Freely.
President, via Zoom, Baroda Township.
Harrison.
President, via Zoom, from Lincoln Township.
Hinkleman.
President, Zoom, Water League.
Majerik.
President, via Zoom, City of Niles.
Meeks.
President, via Zoom, Benton Harbor Township.
Scott.
President, via Zoom, New Buffalo Township.
Borra.
I'm here in the room.
Werfel.
President, via Zoom, Royalton Township.
Yarborough.
President, via Zoom, City of Benton Harbor.
Elliot. Mr. Chair, we have eleven present and one absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The minutes for the May 6, 2021, meeting have been sent to you. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Chair, I would make that motion, Commissioner Freely.
I second the motion, Commissioner Bell.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any additions, deletions, or discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Chair or Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Freely.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Borra.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eleven A's.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Madam Clerk, communications, please.
Yes. Received three communications, one from Alpena County Board of Commissioners, a resolution on county revenue sharing fund received on May 7. A letter from David Buick, State Tax Commission Executive Director, regarding the inner local agreement and Form 5697, tax commission petition for approval of a county designated assessor received on May 10. Livingston County Board of Commissioners, a resolution 2021-5-070, resolution authorizing the issuance of FOIA requests for documents supporting an extension of Miosha COVID-19 emergency rules received on May 11. That's all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, did everybody receive those? All right, hearing hearing that, we will go into our public hearing, and I would like to make a or have somebody take a motion that we move into the public hearing from our regular meeting.
Commissioner Meeks, make that motion.
Thank you, and I need a second.
This is Commissioner Curran, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Jim. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Freely.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Borra.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eleven A's.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're now into a public hearing. This is the Brownfield Project with Community Development Director Dan Fetti. Take it away.
Good morning, everyone. The purpose of the public hearing today is to consider a proposed Brownfield redevelopment plan for the Whirlpool St. Joseph Tech Center. I have a presentation that I'll give you, very similar to the one you saw a few weeks ago on another Brownfield project, after which I'm happy to answer any questions about the Brownfield plan itself, the nature of the project that's being proposed and discussed. We also have with us today Jeff Knoll from Whirlpool Corporation. I'm sure many of you already know Jeff pretty well. And when we conclude the presentation, if you have any questions on some of the larger investments or initiatives that have been recently announced by Whirlpool Corporation in the area, I'm sure Jeff would be happy to answer any questions you have. Let me see if I can pull up my screen share here, and we'll start this presentation going. I know these can be a little tedious, but I'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. Okay. So as some background for everyone, two weeks ago, the Brownfield, Bering County Brownfield Authority met and reviewed this proposed Brownfield plan for the St. Joe Tech Center. After reviewing it, the Brownfield Authority found that it constituted a public purpose, that it was consistent with the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, and they recommended the County Board of Commissioners hold a public hearing and then formally approve this plan by resolution with the concurrence of the city of St. Joe, the jurisdiction within which this project is located. Two Mondays ago, I went to the St. Joe Brownfield Authority meeting and presented the same Brownfield plan to them. They took a look at it, they were satisfied that it constituted a public purpose, that it was consistent with the purpose of the act, and they recommended that this Board of Commissioners approve this plan. They also recommended the city of St. Joe, City Commission concur in the adoption of the plan. I will tell you the reason that we're running this through the Bering County Brownfield Authority, not the St. Joe Brownfield Authority, is the plan is much more administratively complex than the plans that St. Joe typically handles on their own. So they have asked that the county take a lead in administering this plan, which we have a good deal of experience in. This Monday, I attended the St. Joe City Commission meeting, proposed the same presentation to them. We reviewed the plan. The City Commission again found that it constituted a public purpose, that it was consistent with the requirements of the act. The City Commission requested that this Board of Commissioners approve this plan and also voted by resolution to concur in such approval. So that's where we are procedurally. We're at the last stage of the somewhat convoluted approval process. The statute requires that we hold a public hearing to review the plan before this board takes formal action on its approval. So I am going to jump into the presentation on this plan. We'll describe the project in some detail. We'll show you the location of the site under consideration. I'll describe the basis of eligibility. That is why this site is eligible to be included in Brownfield plan. And then we'll go through some of these, what are somewhat technical requirements, what we call the Section 13 requirements. So Whirlpool Corporation plans to redevelop personal property that's located along Upton Drive in the city of St. Joe. The project will redevelop the former and the current Whirlpool Global Washer and Dishwasher Technical Center Research Facility. It involves the demolition of an existing four-story, 120-square-foot building, the renovation of about 20,000 square feet on the north end of the property, and the construction of a brand-new, two-story, 150,000-square-foot research facility attached along the northerly wing of the project. We expect that the project is going to cost a little bit more than $60 million. It'll result, obviously, in a sizable, long-term increase in the tax base of the property. But most importantly, from our perspective, it'll allow Whirlpool to retain the current employment base of the facility, which is 400 jobs that have an annual average compensation of about $140,000 a year. So we're talking about a significant amount of payroll in the Twin Cities area. Whirlpool is seeking tax increment financing from both local taxes and school taxes, which will require the approval of the Michigan Strategic Fund to defray some of the costs associated with this redevelopment project to include due care costs, environmental assessment activities, response activities, that is, you know, environmental response activities, a certain amount of infrastructure improvement that's going to have to be made to support this development, site preparation, demolition of existing buildings, and a new stormwater management system on site because they've had some pretty significant flooding problems on site. Brownfield Authority is also seeking tax increment financing to defray the cost of its administrative expenses related to this project. In total, the estimated eligible activities that would be eligible for reimbursement on tax increment revenue is $7,452,000. So it's a pretty substantial and sizable project. The property is located about two blocks east of Lake Michigan on Upton Drive bordered by Mamnee and Renaissance Drive. It's approximately 14.2 acres. This is the location of the site. For those familiar with it, we have Whitewand Drive here, M-63, heading north, Ridgeway, Upton Drive, Mamnee, Renaissance Drive. This is the facility we're talking about right here. This would be like a Lafarge location for reference points. This is a close-up of the facility. As I said, there would be the demolition of this existing building on the southern part of the property, the renovation of what is now the northern portion of the property, and the construction of a new northern wing off of this. Here's a site plan that shows where the construction of the new 153,000-square-foot wing would be. We have some site renderings to show you what it'll look like upon completion. This has turned about 90 degrees clockwise, so north would be on the right-hand side, south would be on the left-hand side. The parking lot that we're showing here is where the location of the current southern facility is. That's the one that'll be demolished. And then you can see the new 153,000-square-foot research facility on the northern wing, connected by this kind of outdoor courtyard. The exterior renderings, you can see it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility. You can see this is the courtyard I just described, which is the connection between the new northern wing and the existing wing. Here are some renderings of what the interior research and office space will look like upon completion. And as with all of Whirlpool's real estate developments in the area, you can see it's state-of-the-art, high-class, beautiful new facility. The property was occupied by Auto Specialties and the Upton Machine Company from sometime before 1921. That's the earliest photos we have of it until approximately the 1990s. As you all recall, Upton Machine Company in 1950 was renamed Whirlpool Corporation. The structures that were associated with both Auto Specialties and Upton Machine were demolished sometime around 1986 through about 1997. The current structure's been occupied by Whirlpool since about 1997. On the Auto Specialties building, there was a foundry, a machine shop, and some annealing ovens. And on the Upton Machine Company facility, that was a facility that was used to manufacture washing machines and actually air rifles at one point. There was a Phase II site assessment that was conducted on the property in December of 2020, and it revealed the presence of contamination that exceeded certain criteria established by the state of Michigan, thereby making it a "facility." And as you recall, a property has to be defined as a facility in order for it to be included in a Brownfield plan. These are just terms of art. Basically, what they found were some soil contaminations, some impacted groundwater, and some soil vapor impact as well. These were petroleum constituents, arsenic, iron, magnes. The kind of things that we would often see in a manufacturing facility from the early part of the 19th and mid-part of the, early part of the 20th and mid-part of the 20th century. It is worth noting that the Phase II could not delineate which occupant was responsible for the release of the contaminants, but they were presumed to have occurred sometime in the early to mid-1900s. We're talking about, you know, Depression era, World War II era manufacturing processes likely when these contaminants were released. This is a description of the eligible activities that we'll see taking place as part of this project. We have a lot of due care activities. These would be, you know, capping, barrier placements, and so forth. Public infrastructure, there is a public sewer system that needs some upgrades that'll run through the property, a substantial amount of site preparation, site leveling that's going to take place. The demolition is very, we think, going to be very expensive, about $3 million in demo costs. The stormwater management system that needs to be installed to ensure that there isn't additional flooding on site. And then we have about $100,000, we think it's going to cost our Brownfield Authority over 25-year period to administer this plan. We've also factored in some contingent, about 15% contingency on cost. So that's where we come up with 4.7 million. Normally, I would show you the big spreadsheet that shows all the detailed numbers and how we calculate tax increment revenues. It's too convoluted to try to put on a slide of this size. So what I did instead is prepare a summary slide that shows where the tax revenues are coming from. Now, in the case of the St. Joe School Operating Mill, it's the 18 mills, we will capture that with the approval of the state. But the state treasury will reimburse that direct amount to the St. Joe Public School System. So what you see is that St. Joe Schools is going to get about $190,000 annually once this is constructed, or about $4.5 million over the life of the project in new revenue directly. In the case of the county, RISA, LMC, and the city of St. Joe, we will be deferring our collection of the new revenues, capturing those, and then remitting them back to Whirlpool to offset Whirlpool's eligible costs. In the case of the county, it's going to be about $63,000 a year. RISA 25, LMC 25. City of St. Joe, it's going to be about $184,000 a year in new revenue that they will not retain, but rather remit to Whirlpool. So all told, $4.5 million of new revenue to the schools, 1.4, 1.5 of deferred revenue from the county, and about 4.3 of deferred revenue from the city. The cost of this plan has been advanced entirely by Whirlpool Corporation. There will be no advances from the county or any other local unit. There will be no bonded indebtedness on behalf of the county or any local unit. We expect the proposed date of the Brownfield plan capture will begin, there's a typo here, I apologize, it's going to be January of 2022. And it's estimated that this plan will last for 25 years. Yeah, I've already shown you the anticipated impact of the taxing jurisdictions two slides ago. We've looked at the legal description, the location of the site, where it is within the city of St. Joe. We have discussed the basis of its eligibility. It has contamination exceeding certain criteria, thereby making it a facility under Part 201. And I will add that because this is supportive of the manufacturing process, the personal property on site is likely to be categorized as industrial and therefore not subject to taxation. So we have not included that in our calculations of tax increment revenues. We are always required to state whether or not residents will be displaced from a property as a result of its redevelopment. While this is an industrial site, no one resides in the property, so we're not concerned about complying with any uniform relocation requirements. Finally, we have declined to use this project to create something called a Site Remediation Revolving Fund. You may recall that once we pay off all the developer's costs, we can continue to capture taxes for up to five years to seed a revolving fund that can be used on other projects. The county has consistently declined to participate in that process, figuring that once the project is paid off, we want it to come back on the tax rolls as soon as possible. Some final, just some final thoughts on this. As I already indicated, the city of St. Joe is fully in support of the plan. It's consistent with their master plan, as well as their building requirements and zoning requirements. They passed a resolution Monday night supporting the adoption of the plan and concurring in that. If this board approves the plan today, the next step will be that we will sign the developers agreement with Whirlpool. It's an agreement between the Brownfield Authority and Whirlpool spelling out the terms of reimbursement. And then we are scheduled, I've already delivered documents to the state of Michigan, we are scheduled to go to the Michigan Strategic Fund on June 22 to request the Strategic Fund allow the capture of school taxes in support of this project. And we believe we have the support of the Strategic Fund in that matter. So that is, that's the end of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about the project. And if you have questions about the larger Whirlpool commitments and investments in the area, I'm sure Jeff would be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from any of the Commissioners?
Mamie Yarborough, Vice Chairman, may I speak?
Absolutely.
I'd like to say hello to Jeff Knoll's. Welcome to our Bering County Board meeting. Thank you. Thank Whirlpool. I thank all of you for what you're doing in our community at this time in our life. It's such an uplifting thing to see. And I don't know northern, south, but I describe where things are by what was there, Transworld Volkswagen, the building that we're, the public hearing about now. I can describe how to get there. So thank you for all that you all are doing. And this, I'm going to finally tell you, okay, you're, this is your home now. You've been here about 50 years. Thank you, and please pass that on. Then I thank Whirlpool for all that they're doing for our community.
Thank you, Mamie. Any other board members have any other questions on this Brownfield?
I disagree with Mamie, that's all. I want to say I'm in agreement with Mamie.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Freely.
Yes.
I want to say, and I know that Michael Majerik is the Chair of Brownfield, but this was, this was something supported by our Brownfield redevelopment group. And I applaud the opportunity. And I think Whirlpool, as what has already been echoed, I'm echoing those same sentiments from the other Commissioners. It's great to see growth and change and moving forward. So thank you. I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, seeing as none. Annette, are there any public comments during this public hearing?
There are none.
All right, seeing.
Chairman. Do I qualify as public, real quick?
I'm sorry?
Would I qualify as public, real quick?
And who is this talking?
This is Jeff Knoll with Whirlpool Corporation.
Ah, yes, go ahead, Jeff.
I'll be very brief, and Mamie, first of all, and Don, thank you very much. Haven't been here quite 50 years, but I think I've been in the community for 28 years.
Oh, okay.
It's close enough. Look, I just wanted to first thank everyone on the County Commission. This is a big, important project for Whirlpool. But to connect a couple of the dots very quickly, you know, Whirlpool has made an equality pledge that we have made public. And in light of where we are as a society, our belief is that it's time for Whirlpool to make that commitment, and that is to increase employment by 50% of all of our colleagues, to increase by 50% our representation of black colleagues. And that's at all levels within the company. And we also know, though, that in order to be able to do that, we've got to be able to have the kind of facilities that can attract and retain great talent. And if you're working on our laundry categories, if you're working on inventing the next best dishwasher, we need to have talent from all over the world. And obviously, having people working in about 100-year-old property and doing it where there's flooding and things of that nature, that doesn't inspire you to create the best new laundry and new dishwashers that exist out there. So we need this new facility to really strategically be a part of helping Whirlpool continue to grow and attract that talent. Secondly, however, we know that if we're especially going to diverse, attract diverse talent, we need to have other housing options for them. And we are very proud that we're working with the city of Benton Harbor, and we are looking at putting in a $22 million investment over where the old Volkswagen facility used to be in front of our refrigeration tech across the street from our North American headquarters in Benton Harbor. Because we believe by having at least 80 units, we can have housing options for that diverse talent that both we want to bring into the community. But also, our hope is, and we've got a whole set of programs to work with the community, how do we help young people who are growing up in our area go off to school and come to work for us? Or how do we help some young people become interns and apprenticeship and to basically be a part of our family at Whirlpool? We know to do that, they need housing options. And so those are some of the elements in which this project that you're approving today, hopefully, helps us have the facility to design, build, and test great products. But also, what we're doing in the city of Benton Harbor is to create a facility that also allows people to have housing options. And we think, long-term, having areas, and I call it locations in which diverse individuals can come together, get to know each other better, and be a part of the community really does help lift up the entire region. So the communities are, the projects are connected. And I just want to say again, we appreciate the consideration by all of you for this important project. I'd also be remiss to tell you that I've been doing this for a long time. I get to do global projects for Whirlpool Corporation and working with communities and countries. It's a very competitive world out there. But folks, let me tell you, you're very lucky to have Dan Fetti. He is a great representative of the community. He is very good at what he does. And he represents the county in a very, very positive way. When he and Rob Cleveland come together, I like to call him the one-two punch because I think they really do present the kind of image that Bering County truly wants to have for businesses and others that are looking at Michigan's great southwest to come in. And as a resident, Mamie, of this community for 28 years, I also know that it's the people that really matter. And in the end, Whirlpool Corporation, and I'm very proud of the fact that we are the world's largest and most important home appliance company, but really good companies need really good communities, and we need really great people. And if you don't have all three of those elements, you don't have opportunities for its residents, you don't have opportunities for growth, you don't have an opportunity for companies to progress and grow. And I am very proud of the fact that I truly do believe that Michigan's great southwest has all of those three key elements. And ultimately, we want to be here in our community. This will be our 111th year in the community. And a lot of people don't know, and you showed it on the chart there, Dan, back in 1929, when the Upton Machine Company merged with the Bingham Company, there actually had been plans at that time to potentially move the operations to New York. And Mr. Upton put his foot down and basically bought out that enterprise to make sure that it would help stay right here in Michigan's great southwest. So the actions of leadership, the actions of all of you, they have lasting legacies on generations. And I predict that the actions today that you're considering have that same impact from a long-term perspective because candidly, we need great technology and great people in this facility that you're helping to allow to go forward. We can't make that investment in a short-term perspective. It's a very long-term type of investment for our company to make. So thank all of you, and thank you for allowing me to say a few words today.
Certainly do. Thank you. Vice Chairman Scott, may I say something?
Anything that you would like, anytime.
Yeah, and I don't want to be worrisome with this, but I'll probably say it every time I think about it. My father, probably in 1946, '47, right after World War II, worked at 1900 making washing machines. And so that's all I ever knew. And I guess it was a long time before I connected that it was, you know, Upton, Whirlpool, all the layers. But my family has been involved with Whirlpool for many years. And so I'm thankful that you all are getting bigger and bigger in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mamie. And thank you, sir, for giving us a little bit of a background and a little history of Whirlpool and the area. If there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to leave the public hearing and to go back to our regularly scheduled board meeting for today.
I'll make that motion, Michael Majerik.
Commissioner Harrison, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, it's been properly moved and supported. Is there any other discussion? Seeing that there's none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Harrison.
Harrison.
Yes.
Hinkleman.
Yes.
Majerik.
Yes.
Meeks.
Yes.
Vaughnra.
Yes.
Werfel.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Curran.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have a lot of yeses.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're into committee reports. Mr. Chair, can I ask real quick? I'm sure Jeff is a busy man and would like to excuse himself from the meeting. I will hang on silently in case any questions come up prior to the consent calendar. Is that okay? Yes, that is fine. If, yes, I don't have a problem in any of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Jim, for the admin committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Our administration committee met this morning at 8:00 a.m. We have a number of resolutions coming to the board. The first two, acceptance of the annual marine safety grant and approve a contract with Buchanan Township for police protection is going to be reported out on by Commissioner Meeks.
Well, let me unmute myself. Well, the, the resolutions, there's two resolutions. There's resolution 2105216 and 2105221. The first one right there is, is we're getting, I think it's $97,700 for, to the Marine Division. It's for, I believe, 75% of the eligible costs. And it's, it's run from January 1 to December 31, 2021. This, the second one, the Red Bud Trail, is we ran and entered to an agreement for extra police patrols for an amount of reimbursement amount of $20,758. This is really a big event for, for this area. It's really, really huge. And it's really important to our area that, you know, we continue with this pandemic. There was a lot of, lot of things that had to be worked out on this. And our health department did a great job with this right here to make this kind of possible. And, and it also authorized our chairman to enter to agreement, to execute this agreement. And this is all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report, Don.
Okay.
The next two resolutions is for the court recorder upgrades and hazmat emergency preparedness grant. And Commissioner Werfel would like to report out on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The resolution 2105224 is regarding the digital court reporter upgrade. That includes the software and hardware. This is part of the capital approved projects that were approved in this year's budget. And this resolution is specifically to approve the contract for the selected bidder. So that is moving that forward. And then 2105227 is to accept the grant we applied for back in February from the Hazardous Material Safety Administration. It does have an in-kind match of $780 for a total of $3,900.
Hey, thank you for that report. The next two resolutions I will be reporting out on. And the first one is A2105230. And this is to accept a donation from Ms. Virginia Clausen of Benton Charter Township. Let's see, it's in the amount of And this is a result of her will, where she has passed away. And her will is donating that amount of money to the animal controls. Let's see, Animal Control Spay and Neuter Fund. So we will be accepting that through that resolution. And then we have resolution ending in 5231. This is authorized as a speed study. Three Oaks Township requested us to begin the process of doing a speed study on Three Oaks Road from the south Three Oaks Village limits to the Indiana State Line. So we will make that request to the state police, and they will begin that process with our road department to do a speed study, and they will accept the, the results. Those are the six resolutions that are either on the agenda today or will be coming to you in our next meeting. Are there any questions on any of those resolutions? Okay, not hearing any questions. We have a board reappointment, and this is to the jury board. We're not capable of making that recommendation at this point. This particular position is a companion position where the circuit court judges make that recommendation. And we concur with them to make that appointment. And we haven't gotten that from the judges yet. So as soon as the judges do that, we will move that forward. In order to get into our minutes for the Marion Community Foundation distribution form for the Sheriff's Department, I signed a distribution form on May the 10th, which authorizes the amount of $281.54 to go to the, from the foundation to the Sheriff's Department. And this is for two separate condolences flower arrangements that were sent on behalf of the Marion County Reserve Unit. So we had that entered into the, to the minutes. And I believe then, after that, we had some discussion about meeting back in person again. What we've asked the administrator to set is to put together some numbers under our current guidelines for the conference room, how many people it would hold under those guidelines. Also putting together a hybrid of some meeting in person, some virtual, to see how we can eventually come to the goal of meeting in person again in the administration building. So the administrator is going to put that information together and distribute it to the administration committee. We'll take a look at it and see how we can make this happen. And I do believe that's all that was on our agenda. I will look to the other committee members for comments. Did I miss anything? Did I miss, misspeak? If so, speak up now. If not, that's our report.
Yeah, good, Jim. Thank you, Jim. Any of the board members have any questions for the admin committee? All right, seeing that there's none, we're going to move on to the finance committee. And the finance committee, actually, Madam Chair, Yarborough is going to handle it. And we have some unfinished business that we need to take care of, that we didn't get taken care of in our regular finance committee meeting this morning. So with that, Madam Chair.
Mamie, you're muted.
Thank you. I do that every time. Thank you, Vice Chairman Scott. And I would ask at this time for Jake Lytterer to bring some information to us. Would you explain what has happened? And what we'd like to do is open a bid at this time. So Jake?
So we had bid 2021-50 that was due yesterday at 4:00 p.m. for Sheriff's Department holsters. And then we opened the bids this morning. After we opened them, we received one more bid from UPS this morning. After looking at the tracking numbers, they shipped it Tuesday, next day aired. So we should have received it Wednesday, and it would have been in time. And we didn't receive it until today, and that's not the vendor's fault. So that's why we're hoping to open it now.
Okay. Finance Committee?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Scott. I would like to reconsider slash amend my earlier motion on bid number 2021-050 to accept the opening of this bid to be added. And then we'll take it from there to make a new motion or to amend the motion to include this.
And, and what bid was?
I'll have Stephanie do it. Don't. I'll have Stephanie do it.
The bid went out to five. We received three bids, but now we have four. Is that, is that the number we're talking about today?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so I would agree to ask that to open the bid, please.
Okay, so this bid is from Michigan Police Equipment out of Charlotte, Michigan. And their bid is $32,171.85.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Scott. I would like to amend my earlier motion on this made in our finance committee meeting this morning and to allow this bid to be added and to send all of these back to the department head for their purview to check the specifications and requirements and to move forward with the lowest bid. And if not the lowest bid, they have to come back to the finance department for explanation and for their reasoning.
Thank you. May I have a support, please?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Freeling. I would support that amended motion.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Annette, would you call the roll?
It's up to you. I'll call it. Hinkleman.
I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking about, all I was thinking was Stephanie's not here.
Scott.
Yes.
Freeling.
Yes.
Yarborough.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have four yeses.
Hinkleman, oh, you did say? Thank you. Lucy Carries, thank you all. What I would like, Commissioner Scott, is I will do the bids and waivers. And since you're in charge of the meeting. So what I would like to ask to, to let you know that we had a number of bids and then we had waivers. We took one bid that had been late coming in and added it to the other one we had and accepted it with the motion, just like what Commissioner Scott just read. And it went to the proper department. And then we had a number, the other bid we had was for the holsters. And we just added another one to that. So I'll read to you what those bids were. It was sent out to five companies, and we received a total of four bids. One was for CMP distributors of Lansing, Michigan for $32,963.90. Another one was from Mallory Supply of Eugene, Oregon for $28,614.75. From Vans Outdoors, Columbus, Ohio, $29,404.75. And the last one from Michigan Police Equipment, Charlotte, Michigan, $32,171.85. And they're being turned over to the Sheriff's Department for them to look at and choose the one that best meets the specification. And if higher than the lowest bid, they'll come back to our committee with it. Oh, and then we did something with our Economic Development Department. That was, oh, that was at Williams and Works. That was added to the earlier bid for our master plan. Then the Register of Ds, Laura Freeling, came in because she wanted to ask for a waiver to be able to purchase microfilm from the same company that we've been purchasing it for, from, for a good while, and we waived that. Then we had a waiver request from Jill Adams, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Every year when we do these recycling programs periodically, the companies that are there are, we pay them. And we have about five or six that we will be paying this year. And it comes from a grant that we receive each year from the state of Michigan for recycling. And so each year we have to request the amount of money that the Director of Parks asked for. And this time they're saying 30,000, about $30,000. Commissioner Scott asked if it was over, what do you do? And Jill said maybe about twice that she can remember they've had to request more. And each time it's been approved. You, you justify it, and you're able to take care of things. And then Chris Sweetard from IS Department needed a number of annual renewals, and we waived that. And it's necessary that we go with the same company that we not, at some point, we bid it out, but we needed to renew this. And we have a number of them coming up. And one of the things that our administrator suggested is we try to figure out a way, not only for IS Department, but others that have annual renewals where we can make it smoother and easier on us all. And then the Sheriff's Department asked for a waiver for BioCare. It's a company that last year made masks for the Sheriff's Department. And they come in, they must fit, you must be able to breathe well through them and all. And they do it right on site. They measure and there is no other comparison because this just started last year with the COVID. And so they're asking that it be renewed so it can be done in 2021. They've been satisfied with the product and see no need to move on, and we approved of that. Then that was the end of the waivers. And the next thing, Warren Parish, our Director of Equalization, came in with us to approve the millage rates for Marion County. And even though there is a rollback on millages, he really explained things well. And he will be coming to the full board next week to explain to you about the millage and what the ramifications of it means. I'm just trying to see. Oh, oh, Commissioner Freeling will report to us on the transportation work that they've done with Evan Smith, Dan Fetti, and Risa.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the resolutions that will be coming before the school board next week is F2105226. It is a resolution related to Marion Bus and a contract with Marion Risa. So last year, many of us will remember that TMI around this time had announced that they were no longer going to be in operation. So at that time, the county brought Marion Bus operations in-house. And the TMI employees became temporary employees for Marion County. During that time, there was a lot of discussion with this board of how do we move forward? And our community development staff, along with the members of the BCAT team, which includes myself, Commissioner Kern and Commissioner Harrison, have been working on trying to find solutions, not only for employment plan, but also suitable operation plans for Marion Bus moving forward. So just this week, our partners at Marion Risa approved a personnel agreement that will basically move the staff that we, employees that we have with Marion Bus under this personnel agreement through Marion Risa, through a third-party provider, starting this summer, that will basically have those employees as employees of Marion Risa. And then we at the county can actually buy back the services. And one of the things I really want to emphasize is that this agreement, though it helps us to solve the, the issue with employment and how we can create stability for those who have been serving in the transportation arena for Marion Bus to give them some stability on employment. It's not going to be changing our service, our agreements, any of those types of things. That is still a discussion that we are having. But this gives us a little bit of breathing room. But this gives us a little bit of breathing room in order to make certain that we don't hit that cap of that thousand hour limit that we have for our temporary employees. And basically, it continues to fortify a great partnership that we have with Barien Risa and help our employees that we have with Barien Bus so they have some stability. And in the long run, it is a saving to the county because there was so much unknown in this that Dan Fettie and Evan had recommended putting about five hundred thousand dollars in contingency for Barien Bus in the operations. And through this agreement, I believe that this year's contract will be about two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And then moving forward for next year's will probably be about four hundred thousand dollars. And so there is a significant savings to the county. And actually, it's a better arrangement for the employees who are working as Barien Bus employees currently. Because they'll also have opportunities for healthcare and for a with 401 K investments. And so it is our recommendation from the finance committee to move this forward for consideration for the full board.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Freeling. I'd like to ask if there are any additions to the report, other things that I may have missed. Then I would like to ask if there are any questions from any other from Barien County Board members. Then Commissioner Scott, that is my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any questions for finance? Okay, seeing that there is none, the next thing on our agenda is public comments. This is regarding resolutions only.
So we have a comment from Tony Benhart of Sothis Township regarding resolution number F two one zero five two one nine. Why only tech jobs and not blue collar jobs were pulled has removed most, if not all, of the blue collar jobs. Not every worker in the area is tech or white collar, but there are a lot of blue collar factory workers that would be available for the factory jobs that have been removed from the area. And I will ask for more time if there are any more public comments regarding resolutions. Okay, that's all the public comments regarding resolutions. I did have one else, one other one come in, but that will be during general public comments. So I will pick that up then.
Thank you, Annette. The next item is consent calendar. I haven't heard from anybody or anybody if they want something pulled from the consent calendar. So seeing as that looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar. And what does the board feel about the added resolutions? Do you want those included in the consent calendar as a whole? It's your pleasure.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Commissioner Kern. I'd make a motion that we approve the consent calendar along with the added resolutions.
Mamie Yarborough, I support.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there is no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Hinkleman?
Yes.
Majeri?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Ballrath?
Yes.
Warful?
Yes.
Yarborough?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Kern?
Yes.
Freely?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eleven days.
Thank you so much. Our next thing on the agenda is board appointments and we're going to go back to Commissioner Kern for that.
There we go. I was muted for a minute there, Mr. Vice Chair. But yeah, I I believe during my administration committee report that we're not ready to make that board appointment yet. Unless Annette has a comment.
Thank you. No, I have received more input since your meeting, but I do not have all yet. So we'll still have to come back to that at admin level first.
All right. Thank you much, Jim and Annette for your work on that. The next thing on the agenda is commissioner reports. Is there anything any county commissioner would like to report on? Feel free to do so.
Vice Chairman Scott, I'd like to let you know I attended a Michigan Works committee meeting, I think yesterday, Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday. And it's telling about the programs and all the things that they're doing and the training and some agreements that they have with people being able to do internships. And sometimes it turns into permanent jobs and all. And they're teaching them, you know, how to go to work and to stay at work and to be on time and all of that. And so it was a good meeting. Very well, you know, a number of people attended. And so there connects us, Michigan Works is doing a lot of work. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Meeks, also attended that meeting, but I can't add nothing to Mamie have said because she covered everything. So I agree with what Mamie said and I'd say ditto. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Chair? Oh, sorry, my dog wanted to speak too, apparently.
Well, that's fine. We've got time.
I just wanted to make the board aware that at the end of April, the Michigan Association of Counties had their annual conference. Myself, Commissioner Warful, Commissioner Bell, Commissioner Ballrath. I think that was the only four, just the four of us that attended that virtually. I wanted to make the board aware that all of the presentations were recorded and that if you would like to go and take a look at the information that was shared, there was some really good information that was distributed there. Myself, I attended Leading in Times of Change, Dispelling the Mist of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, County Apportionment, a round table on legislation. It was really amazing information. And I also, I guess I want to toot my own horn a little bit too, because I was also recognized as a certified commissioner. Yeah. Through the Max County Commissioner Academy. Thank you. And so anybody who continues to take courses, you can get ten credits in two years. You become a certified county commissioner. In four years, if you do twenty credits, you become an advanced certified commissioner. And so I just encourage us to continue to educate ourselves and grow. That's my report, sir.
Thank you. And at this point in time, I see our chair is here and I will turn the meeting over to Mac. We're in committee reports.
Thank you. Might be a good time then to see if the administrator has anything to share. Members of the board, today was a big deal with the Warful presentation with the the Brownfield Plan approval. This is something that I started working here in early July. And it's something that at the staff level, we've been talking about, staff has been working on for months and months and months. And I just, I wanted to take the time and thank the the commissioners for the support of the Brownfield Plan. And then just offer some compliments, which I've already sent to our staff. But I'll I'll follow up and just say, to get this thing across the finish line is really impressive. And I think your staff here did a really good job on getting the project done. Those are my comments.
Thank you. General public comments?
Adolf Holser in Hager Township. How much are the drug companies charging for the testing and the vaccine? Do not tell me that all this is free. When do we have to get another vaccine shot? I'm asking another town to see if we have any more calling events. I think you're good.
All right, other business? Announcements, reminders? You can see on the bottom of the second page. BHS, next Thursday at eight o'clock, finance at nine o'clock. Jim, I imagine if Admin's going to meet, you'll just let Annette know and she'll get a calendar. And of course, we're here next week as always, same time, same station. Anyone have any announcements?
Mac, Commissioner Scott, I'd like to let everybody know that tomorrow at noon is the Police Officers Memorial at the on the bluff. And I'm sure the sheriff is there. I just realized that he can talk more freely. But I wanted to get that in, Sheriff, so people know.
Thank you.
Sheriff, you had put your hand.
Well, that's what I was going to say, but that's just wanted to remind everybody. If you can make it, the families are invited and we have a lot of families that come from the fallen officers.
Hopefully it will be good weather and certainly a good cause. I have a, yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry. I would like to just make an announcement to the public that just yesterday, the FCC started accepting applications for a program. We're always talking about broadband. It's always relevant in my mind, it seems. Getemergencybroadband.org is the website you can go to. And it's a program that offers an onset for those who need broadband, particularly those who are of school age to be able to get a credit of up to fifty dollars. Unless it's on tribal land, it's seventy-five dollars monthly to offset the cost of broadband expenses for homes and families.
All right, thank you, Terry. Anyone else? Speaking of making an announcement to the public, I have a public service announcement. Don't eat popcorn left over from the night before, those little half popcorns that are so crunchy. I always dig through the bag before. I'm not going to do that anymore because you can lose a filling. It's just not worth it. So give it up. It'll be another off store. Anyway. Yeah, I really love those too. So.
Mac, Commissioner Scott, just one thing. Brian, after this meeting is over and before the next meeting, could you give me a call on my cell? I want to talk to you a second about this lift zones.
All right, folks, I guess that's it. We'll get together next week. We stand adjourned until then.